I'm welcoming viewers around the world, viewers in Massachusetts and viewers all over the social media. My name is Ronald Bernard and I'm hosting the show called Dialogue with the Candidates. Dialogue with the Candidates is a show that MCTV, which is multicultural television network, we created to give opportunity, opportunity for people who are running for office, they can come here and share their political agenda and they can talk to the public so the public can know who they are. And at the end, when the public go to the poll, they will make informed decision. So today, we have the chance to have with us Ricardo Arroyo.
Yes, Arroyo.
Arroyo, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for having me on.
You're very welcome. And Ricardo is running for city council for District Five, which, which covers Matapan, High Park and Rosendale. So Ricardo, I always give this opportunity to all the candidates that I've been receiving. So why you decide to run for city council?
So I was raised in a family that taught about communal responsibility and the idea that we're responsible to our communities. And so when I was growing up, I made a decision to become an attorney, a public defender. And I've been a public defender in the state of Massachusetts for the last three years. And in doing that work, you get to do a lot of one-on-one work with people that are in crisis. And that's very valuable, but I started to realize that there were policies and things that were put in place that kept bringing me clients and also kept making the lives of my clients worse. And so I saw the chance to run for the city council as an opportunity to actually do something about those top-down policies that are really devastating our communities. And so I announced that I would run against an incumbent at the time for the city council. And now here we are, I think, almost two weeks away from the final. But the, the large reason I ran was to make sure that we could start to make sure that this city worked for everybody, that there was an equitable distribution of resources, and that equity and justice were centered behind every conversation on policy.
Okay. So thank you for, you know, to let people know why you're running for this position. And District Five, so what are the issues people in District Five facing? And you would like to talk, and I don't know if you have, you know, a strategic plan or, you know, your political agenda, how you're gonna tackle, you can take, you know, one example and share with the audience.
So I, I'm happy to have, I mean, we can even go further than just examples, but there's, obviously, housing and the way that development is affecting the neighborhoods is a big deal. I would say, one of the things that I talk about a lot is economic equity. And so what I mean by that is, the city has discretionary contracts. So the city budget is about 3.3 billion dollars. Every year, they give out discretionary contracts, that's contracts for things like landscaping, it might be contracts for things like development, it might be for printing, it might be for media, could be for any number of different things. And those contract food catering, and those contracts can amount to a lot of money. So last year, that contract was over 665 million dollars in total, in total contracts that the city gave out. Less than 1% of that, less than 1% went to companies that were owned by women or people of color. That's intentional. That has to be intentional, that's, that's not, that is, that is a symptom of decades of institutional racism, that's a symptom of us not putting the resources that we need to put into companies owned by women, companies owned by people of color. That trickles down into the neighborhoods. So when we talk about Matapan, Matapan is one of the only neighborhoods that doesn't have a liquor license. Matapan is one of the most embodied, when you talk about any disparity, it embodies almost all of those at a level that's unacceptable. So for instance, Matapan is leading, or at least at this point, one of the top two in the neighborhoods in the city with health disparities. And so these are issues that trickle down if you don't focus on bigger policy issues. So I would say, when we talk about equity, right, that, that's, that hits everything. When we talk about education, when we talk about public school funding, when we talk about economic development, when we talk about housing, all of these issues affect the district. And if you're not looking at them with an eye towards how policy has affected these things on gender or by race or by economic class, then you're not doing the, a proper evaluation of how to tackle these problems when you're in the city council. And so I think those are a big thing. You even see it trickle down into things like constituent services. So for instance, if you go into different parts of the neighborhoods, based on economic disparity, based on racial breakup of those neighborhoods, you're gonna see that the services they've received from the city aren't the same. That the regular maintenance, the regular things that you would expect to see in some parts of the district, aren't going to measure up to the way that they are received in other parts of the district. Those are the kinds of inequities that I'm trying to tackle on the day-to-day basis of constituent services. So these, these are major issues.
Those inequity and disparity you mentioned, how you like actually, let's say realistically, gonna tackle that? So how?
So I think the first thing is by putting voice to it, right? And so part of that is, you can't solve a problem that nobody talks about, right? That's not how that works, right? And so you have to talk honestly about these issues, which means you have to talk about making sure that when city services are available, like city contracts, that the process that we set up to get those contracts is fair. That those built-in biases, the things that are making it so that by the time they're handing out these contracts, there's only 1% companies owned by women or 1% companies owned by people of color, that's not there. And so if that's an education of the community, if that's just educating folks on how to get through that process, then we start there. If that's changing or making sure that that process isn't discriminatory and isn't weeding out people who are of color or women-owned companies, then that's doing that, right? It might be doing a combination of those things. But you start by making sure that you talk about what the issue is, and then you address it. When it comes to economic development, for instance, Matapan has had, I think, at this point, for quite some time, it's been at least a decade that I can think of, where they've gone without a liquor license. Here's how that trickles down into other things. When you don't have a liquor license, most of these squares and all of the squares in the district, so we have Matapan Square, we have High Park has Clearly Square, we have Walcott Square, we got Rosendale Square, right? All of the squares are in the district. If you go to Rosendale Square, you're gonna see that there's kind of a lively economic community. You're gonna have little shops, you're gonna have restaurants. A lot of that reform of that neighborhood, of that, of that square, started because restaurants came in with liquor licenses and so they, they became economic anchors. The issue that we have in Matapan is there are no economic anchors in that way. Restaurants tend to serve that way. So when we talk about liquor licenses, it's important to talk about what that means. We're talking about, most companies and small business owners who have restaurants, they use the liquor license as collateral. Collateral is what gives them the financing. And so when you don't have access to the financing, then you don't get the liquor license. If you don't have the liquor license, you're less likely to have a successful sit-down restaurant, right? And so one of the things that I would push on, so one of the solutions that we can do already, it already exists, we could already do it. The Invest in Boston Act, passed in 2013. What that did was, the city budget is 3.3 billion dollars now. Half of that budget at any time is in a bank. The way that would work if you were an individual person who had that much money, banks would fight for your business, right? They would say, here's why it makes sense for you to give me your money, because we're gonna do this and we're gonna do that. Right now, the way it works is, we just give money to the banks. Invest in Boston passed in 2013. What it did was, it created a set of criteria which we could judge which banks could get our money. How many business loans were you giving to our community? How many people were you hiring? How many foreclosures were you responsible for? How many home loans are you giving? Those are the kinds of questions we should be asking of these banks. We have a mechanism to do it, but we haven't done it yet. That, that, what that act has passed, which passed in 2013, hasn't been instituted yet. I would lead on making sure that gets instituted, because answering those questions by those banks then creates a situation where we can start to get financing for short businesses. Because what happens is, if you make it competitive to hold that money, they make money off of the money from the city that they're holding, they're gonna compete for it. And if they're gonna compete for it, and the metrics are, you have to give business loans, you have to give, you have to help people into homes, you have to hire people from our neighborhoods, you're gonna see that economic development start to happen, you're gonna start to see people getting into homes that otherwise were kinda getting locked out, right? Because you give them the carrot.
How transparent that could be, like, to help entrepreneur who own, you know, restaurant to access the liquor, you know, as you say, license?
So the liquor license goes through a licensing board. But here's the thing, so now Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley, when she was a city councillor, she was very heavy on this issue. And there's a different form of a liquor license you can get that is operated through the Main Streets program. So all of those squares qualify. But that liquor license is worth zero dollars. But if you had the financing to open up a restaurant, then it doesn't matter to you necessarily that that, that liquor license that you're using, which is helping your business, is worth zero dollars. But if you were dependent on the liquor license to be the collateral you're using to finance your restaurant, then that zero-dollar liquor license doesn't help you start a business, doesn't help you keep it. And so by forcing the banks to do Invest in Boston, forcing banks to actually be responsive to our communities, whether they're the Haitian community, the Latino community, the white community, whatever community in any of this part of this district, because it's one of the most diverse, right? The idea here is to make sure that there's a concentrated effort, a concentrated pressure on ensuring that small business owners and folks who are trying to get economically empowered in our district through entrepreneurial businesses, it doesn't have to just be restaurants, are actually receiving the kind of collateral, the kind of financing, the kind of support they need to succeed. Some of that is gonna involve, as a city councillor, as a district councillor, making sure that there's somebody in our office who is responsive, and that person will be me. But when I say somebody, I mean language justice, right? Somebody in our office who speaks the many languages of this district, who can ensure that they're getting shuttled through the proper channels correctly. There's, you know, there's inspectional services, there's all kinds of different departments that you have to navigate in the city when you're trying to put together a business. Those kinds of things we hear all the time are really hindering our communities, especially when they're not being understood because there's language barriers or because there's the kind of gridlock that tends to happen in bureaucracies. And so part of what my job would be as a city councillor is to make sure that I'm shepherding my constituents through that process as best I can.
Okay. So if we take the other issue you mentioned briefly about education.
Yes.
Let's say, before the, the primary on September 24th, I saw the debate you had at that time, and you were opposed having school committee.
Yes.
So why, in your, in your thinking, it's not gonna be beneficial if they are, I mean, having a school committee?
So if I can step in, I'm not opposed to having a school committee. I think the school committee should exist.
Well, you for, yeah, your opponent is against that, but you for having a school committee elected, right?
Yes, so to be clear on this, I am Boston Public School educated. I came through Boston Public Schools, my mother was a Boston Public School teacher for 30 years, my father was actually on the school committee. And so my early education and the way these things worked, I was a Boston Public School student, and then I would go, I was, you know, in the first, second grade, and I would go to community, school committee meetings, because my father was on the school committee. And so I understood at a very early age how policy that they decided in that room affected students like me. At, at a very early age, I learned the discrepancy. What I would say is, right now, the way that the school committee works, there's been lots and lots, we've knocked on 17,000 doors in our campaign, as of right now. I would say that when people talk about the school committee, the way they talk about it is, they want somebody who's accountable to parents, accountable to students, right? And that they would want transparency in the way that they make their decisions. The issue, the issues that gave rise to that frankly are numerous. There's a number of different things, most recently with the superintendent being replaced, where parents didn't feel like they were in the loop on that. And that's really the school committee's job, is to, is to handle superintendent matters and things of that nature. The way I would see it, right, is I want, I, I do things from the values of how I would like them to be done, and then I figure out the system to do it. And so what I want the values of the school committee to be is accountability to, to the people that they are responsible to, which are parents, teachers and students. I'd like them to have independence, to make decisions, based on what they believe is best, not based on what, you know, they're told to do. And I think that the way you get those things, right, the reason why I'm in an elected seat and not an appointed seat, is that the people get to decide who they think should be best, is best adequate or best, best suited to represent their needs, right? And there's a process in that where you have to meet me, you have to hear me, I have to speak to you, you have to know who I am. And there's that process that's part of anything that's elected. And so I like that. What I would say is, I'm actually for those three values on the basis that if we do it by an elected school committee, if that's the one that makes the most sense, great. If we do it by what's called a hybrid, where some are elected and some are appointed, great. If we do it by appointment, but it's because we changed the mechanisms of appointment, great. And the reasons why those are crucial are there certain issues like students who have learning disabilities or bilingual education, these kind of things that really need a voice at the table. And we have to ensure that those voices are there. And if we can do that through an elective rule process, fantastic. If we have to do a hybrid process to do that, fine. But what I'm looking for is a school committee that's independent and accountable to students, parents and teachers, and right now, we can't say that. And so whatever method that we use to get there, I'm happy with, but we're not there yet. And so that's why I can't be for leaving it the same.
Okay, thank you. So I'm reminding all the viewers, you are listening to Dialogue with the Candidates, in which that we invite candidate to come to the podium at MCTV, and they can talk about their political agenda, they can talk about the issues they want to tackle in order to improve people's life. So today, we have with us Ricardo Arroyo with us, who's running for city council for Boston for District Five, that's, that covers Matapan, High Park and Rosendale. So we continue with the dialogue, Ricardo. So in terms of the, let's say, issue of cleanliness in the city, so how, what is the, the state of it now and how you plan to tackle it?
So I think part of the, the main jobs of a city councillor is constituent services, which includes making sure that the neighborhoods we live in are clean and safe, right? And so part of that is recognizing that the level of services that we receive around the district are not adequate in all of our communities. And so a big priority for me is making sure that Matapan, High Park and Rosendale receive the services they require, which includes services that would do park cleanups, that would make sure that, you know, part of the complication for a lot of folks is, they see a park, they think that belongs to the city. But not all the parks belong to the city. Some parks belong to a state agency, they belong to DCR, right? And so that's why there's sometimes holdups where they say, well, this park's perfectly fine, but this park's not. It's because the state isn't doing their part of the bargain, or sometimes it's the city. But a city councillor's job is to make sure that I'm putting pressure on the appropriate agencies to make sure that our parks look the way they're supposed to look. I'm gonna spend a focal amount of my time making sure that this, these neighborhoods, which I grew up in, these parks which I played in and which my family plays in, that they look the way they should. I think when we go beyond just cleanliness, right, there's, there's maintenance, right? Making sure that our streets are being repaired when they're supposed to be repaired, making sure the street lights are fixed where they're supposed to be fixed, because there's safety issues and concerns with that. Those are the kinds of things that you would call a district councillor for. And a big part of what I see my, my goal as, is empowering communities that in the past have not felt like they've had access to this office, to have access to this office, to know that they can call me, and that those are the kinds of problems that I'm gonna be seeking to fix.
Okay. In terms of safety, in the, you just mentioned, in the cities, so what type of, like, kind of, let's say, what are the causes of the violence you've been seeing? And number one, number two, how you plan, you know, to?
Address it. So being a public defender, I've seen, I've been very up close with our criminal justice system. And I would say that the most violent thing that happens in our communities is poverty. And if we don't address poverty and the root causes of poverty, then we're never going to have truly safe neighborhoods. Because everything that comes from poverty tends to lead to these negative results, right? And that means creating opportunity, right? And so part of that is twofold, right? Part of that from the work that I've done. And I've, I've dealt with folks who've been accused of numerous different things. And what I have found is that nobody wants to be in that lifestyle, whether they're addicted to something, whether they're a part of a gang, whether they're dealing with any of those different things that people do when they're desperate. Nobody wants to be in those situations, they just don't have access to ways out of it. And so part of that means putting funding into treatment, putting funding into our treatment facilities, putting funding into job training. The fact is, when I was doing work with clients, if they fit a certain age bracket, there was always something that I could find. But once you're 30 years old, it's much harder to find programs and things to put people in, to help them find a new way to be productive members of society. And so I would be focusing on trying to expand our programming, but also making sure that we fund the program we have, because we don't have enough funding into our youth jobs, into things that really change those things, that really change outcomes. So that's one. When we talk about, you know, getting to the root causes of this, part of that is making sure that everybody has a great education, right? And so focusing on making sure that our schools are fully funded, and very important to me, when I say fully funded, I mean have wraparound services. I mean have things like guidance counselors, have things like nurses, have things like school therapists. Because part of the issues that we have are folks, we don't have resources for folks in the school system to identify folks who have learning disabilities, who have issues with mental health, and we don't have the resources to treat it. And so if we don't adequately do that, then we're, we're really doing a disservice to our communities and we're doing a disservice to our kids. And so I think if we start to really focus on funding secondary services within our school system, you're gonna see better outcomes for our students, you're gonna see better outcomes for our communities.
Okay, you mentioned poverty.
Yes.
The root of the poverty. So if now, let's say, the situation in, in District Five, and how are you gonna create, like, you know, economic development that, besides of do the job training, but what type of jobs you will bring that would be available for, you know, people in this community? Is what I'm saying, like, for instance, in terms of economic development? So let's say, I don't have a job, because of that, I, I cannot provide for myself. So I don't know, like, for instance, in Matapan, Rosendale, what job that's available around the city?
So I would say, right now, if you go around the city, you're gonna see that the city's in a growth boom, right? So you see cranes in all these neighborhoods, you see cranes downtown. The best job, when I was dealing with folks as a, as an attorney, when I was working with folks, the best place I could ever land people was in trades unions. And the reason for that was, these trades lead to productive careers, they can lead to six-figure salaries, and they take folks who can work with their hands, who are hard workers, who understand construction, who understand electrical, who understand plumbing, and they train you in those fields. And so there was a program called Operation Exit, which I was a very big fan of, which took a lot of our, my clients and would put them through a training process, and when they made it through that training process, they could then become apprentices and then they could then join these unions. And that's, that's profitable for everybody, that's profitable for the city, because these folks are now going from a position where they weren't able to give back to their communities and they now are able to, they're able to invest in their neighborhoods, they're able to purchase commodities, they're able to go sit down at a restaurant, for instance, in Matapan and spend money. And so those kinds of things trickle out. From a city council standpoint, I see vibrant business districts as incredibly important, because the money that you give to every business is not given equally. So what I mean by that is, if you invest money in a local business, then you're investing into your own neighborhood. You're investing into a local workforce, you're investing into a local entrepreneur, you're actually keeping your money home. So that money, it goes much further than if you say, go to a chain store and you buy something from a chain store, that money's going to corporate, that money's going to different places, right? It might be employing local people, that's true, but the money isn't staying home the same way. It's not, you know, local, local stores are the ones that support our youth programs, right? You're never gonna go to a youth sports team and see on the back, you know, Walmart, right? You're always gonna see some local store or some local leaders who have paid for that uniform, who have paid for those programming. So you wanna make sure that these local businesses are getting the support they need to actually hire locally, but also to invest. And so there's multiple phases and ways that you get people into, into the workforce. I think a big area that I would like to try and figure out how to, to get folks in is tech is really important as we move forward. Tech is a growing community, is a growing thing. It, it's only gonna keep growing. I, I think I'd like to see, and I'd like to focus on more investment in making sure that we teach tech in our schools, because the way that we're gonna move forward, the jobs that we need to be preparing kids for now, look different than the jobs we were preparing kids for in the 80s, right? And so we need to make sure we adapt to those things and that we're making sure constantly that we're putting kids in positions to succeed and also their parents, right? And so that means adapting and making sure we're finding different ways to get folks in.
Okay. So I have to say congratulations, because, you know, you passed the first, let's say, I always say, first test, like, it was September 24th.
Yep.
And now you are running against your opponent on September, on November 5th.
November 5th is the final.
So besides of the school committee, committee, I know you're defier guys. What makes you different, like, from, in terms of either policy, in terms of ideas, from your opponent?
I would say I'm a progressive. And so I would, what I would talk about is more so, my vision for the district is inclusive. And what I mean by that is, I announced I was gonna run in December. And the first thing I did was, I sat down and I said, I wanna make sure that we reach out to every community, every member of every community. And we did that. That's how we knocked on 17,000 doors. We were knocking on doors in High Park, we were knocking on doors in Rosendale, we were knocking on doors in Matapan. And the second thing I said was, if we're gonna reach out to folks, we wanna make sure that we let them know, in a way that maybe they didn't know before, that government serves them. And so government should be multilingual. Language justice is incredibly important to me, I'm bilingual. And so I said, okay, every piece we hand out is gonna have three languages on it. And so all our, all our literature is in Haitian Creole, Spanish and English. We did that the first day that we did everything. We haven't deviated from that. The other thing that we've been very secure in is that we're very open, that we believe in an inclusive, diverse district. And so we don't hide our pieces. So I wouldn't say, you know, somebody might not like that there's a certain language on here, because they think it should just be English. So we're not gonna drop it in every community, we drop it everywhere. And if they don't like it, then they don't have to vote for me. But our values are always going to be public. And our values are, this is an inclusive district, this is a rich, very culturally rich district. And so my job and the way that I think I've effectively shown that, is making sure that we're reaching out to all of those. And we're telling them that I serve you. That's how this works. My job is to best serve you. And so you should expect that people who speak multiple languages are in my office. You should have seen that, and you haven't. And if we're being honest, we haven't, right? And so I ran against an incumbent. I ran against an incumbent because I didn't believe that the neighborhoods were reaching, receiving the services they, they needed. I didn't believe that his views were in lockstep with what I thought this district wanted. And, you know, I would say that I didn't come from that office, I don't have that kind of background. My background has always been, how do we bring more people in, how do we make sure they understood that they're valued, that they're respected as people? And how do we make sure that this leadership that we're trying to exhibit includes all of these neighborhoods? It doesn't say, well, you're a different neighborhood and so somehow you're less important, or you're a different cultural background, so somehow you're less important. And I think the way you do that is, you show from the very beginning and in everything that you do, that all of these languages are equally important to us. All of these communities are equally important to us. And what I can say and I stand by is, I've done that from, from day one, I'm gonna do it until I'm no longer alive. My goal is to make sure that everybody understands that I see myself in all parts of our community. I understand, because I have parents who are immigrants, what that is. I have friends who are immigrants, I grew up in that. I know what it is to have folks who depend on somebody to speak their language so that they can be understood. They are just as much a resident of this district as anybody else, they deserve the same level of city services, they respect to have an elected official who answers to them. And so my job, as I see it, is to model that. And to make sure that what I'm modeling on my campaign is a good example of what you can expect me to model as a city councillor. If somebody isn't putting language materials out in your language, but wants your vote, you should question that. If they're not making impact, inroads into your community, but they want your vote, you should wonder how they're going to operate when they're in office, right? I would, which is why I wanted to make sure from the very beginning that my campaign was always inclusive of all these neighborhoods. We didn't count anybody out. We didn't say, this, these folks over here are less than these folks over here, we didn't do any of that. We made sure that we were all over the district, that everything we did talked about that. And so what I would say is, judge us by our campaigns. At the end of the day, the way that we're running our campaigns, the way that we're talking to these communities, is the way you should expect us to lead. And if they weren't talking to your community, then why would that change? And if they're coming from an office that wasn't talking to our communities, why would that change? And so for me, my focus has been on making sure that the community sees me in person, that's why we're knocking on doors, that's why we're taking the interviews, that's why we're doing what we can, that they understand that just because, you know, what's been in the past is happened, doesn't mean that what'll be in the future will happen, right? And so part of that, you know, one of the things I hear all the time, when I go to meetings, for instance, and, and we don't have to sugarcoat it, when I'm in meetings in Matapan, a lot of what we hear all the time is, you know, we don't really see people here. of what we hear all the time is, you know, we don't really see people here. After Election Day, we're gonna see you again. That's the second question, right? The first thing is always very happy that we're there. The second thing is, but are you gonna be here after the election? And that's because there's been a lot of heartbreak in these communities from people who come to ask for a vote but don't come to deliver services. And my goal is to make sure that that question is never asked, at least of me, ever again. But that they understand that they matter, that they matter for more than just a vote, they matter because they're residents, because they're part of our community. And so those are the kinds of things that I'd like to effectively model as I campaign and those are the ways that I'd like to effectively model leadership. Because I truly believe that when you exhibit that, when people get used to that level of service, they never accept anything else. And that's what I want for our neighborhoods.
Well, I'm gonna ask a question. Sometimes what happened, it just, I'm gonna ask about teamwork.
Yep.
Because it's true, you would like to deliver your promise, you know, to the community. And everything you're saying, you're gonna bring it to the table where you're gonna be dealing with other city council. And how you plan, like, in terms of navigating, you know, the system and you can deliver and keep your promise?
So I think that's really important, what you just said, is teamwork, right? Because I don't believe in hero politics, I believe in collaborative politics. And the way I define that as hero politics is, you know, if you vote for me, I'm gonna solve everything. Me, I'm gonna do that. Collaborative politics understands that our problems are bigger than any one person. And so the way that we solve these things is by working together, right? So I believe in collaborative politics. And to that effect, I've been honored to have the endorsement of City Councillor Michelle Wu, I've been honored to have the endorsement of City Councillor Lydia Edwards, I've been honored to have the endorsement of City Councillor Kim Janey. Those are people who already serve on the city council. I've built relationships with, for instance, I have the support of District Attorney Rachel Rollins, because I know that a lot of our work in the criminal justice system is gonna require partners there. I have the support of Sheriff Tompkins for the same reason. I have state representatives and state senators who have supported my candidacy, and that's because I understand that not all of our problems are local. Some of them are gonna require statewide partners, or district-wide or county-wide. And so I've made efforts on this campaign to build those relationships already so that when we get there, we can hit the ground running. And I think we've navigated that, we've shown that. I'm very proud of the folks who've endorsed me, because I think it speaks to, again, what I've talked about, making sure that we have an inclusive message, that it doesn't, you know, doesn't deviate or exclude people based on religion, race, or gender, or, you know, immigration status, right? A big part of, we haven't spoken about it, but a big part of what led me to run was immigration, right? The reason was, when we have leaders in charge who demonize immigrants and we have a district that's about 40% immigrants, that's a local issue. That's something that affects people in our lives every day. I know currently that TPS is being threatened for the Haitian community, that's a massive issue. And so as a district city councillor, that's a local problem. That's a problem I plan on leading on every day. And so these are the kinds of things that I see and, you know, to that regard, the city council has some power, they passed the Trust Act. And right now, they're trying to strengthen the Trust Act. And I wanna be part of making sure that the Trust Act, which prohibits our state agencies from working with ICE, I wanna ensure that we strengthen that, that we make that stronger for our communities so that they don't longer have to be in fear of being deported simply because they exist, right? I think that there's a world in which we can make sure that we lift up our immigrant community and understand that most of the immigrants in our community, frankly, all the ones that I actually know, are entrepreneurial, family-oriented, some are religious, not all, but all of them are family-focused. All of them want what's best for their families, what's best for their communities, they give back in a variety of different ways, none of them should be living in fear. And so my goal as a city councillor is to ensure that they have at least one more person in office who's fighting on their behalf.
Okay. So I'm reminding all the viewers, this show is the Dialogue with the Candidate. Dialogue with the Candidate, it's a show in which we receive candidate, people who are running for office, they can share their political agenda, they can share their strategy in order to address issues. So we have with us Ricardo Arroyo. We are at the end of the show. And usually this is what we do, we give everybody opportunity to make the case to the viewers. And you, as the viewers, you will decide on the poll how you will judge that. So Ricardo, it's your opportunity right now to make your case to the viewer of MCTV.
Thank you for having me, MCTV. Just like this multicultural television network, the district is multicultural, this district is intergenerational, this district is frankly beautiful, I was born and raised in it. The community that embraced me when I was growing up is a community that I would like to serve now. I see this opportunity as a chance for us to work collectively on issues that are really, all of them, you could put crisis after, you could say transportation crisis, because that's a massive issue, you could say affordable housing crisis, because that's a massive issue, you could say funding education crisis, because that's a massive issue. All of these issues are urgent, they require our collective energies. And I'm seeking to lead an inclusive, diverse office that would address these issues head-on, that would center justice and equity in every decision, and that would lift up voices of all members of our community and would ensure that all members in all parts of our community are seen in a way that they haven't been and that they actually feel that their leader in this seat, that their city councillor is responsive to them and understands deeply that he serves them. And so I want to be that leader, I want your vote, I need your vote. And so I'm asking for your vote November 5th to bring that kind of leadership to the city council, to bring that kind of leadership to the District Five city council seat. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ricardo. So Ricardo is running for city council for District Five, that covers Matapan, High Park, and Rosendale. So we are at the end, as I say, of the show. Thank you, Ricardo.
Thank you so much for having me, I appreciate it.
And we will see all the viewers for another show, another show as Dialogue with the Candidate.